All right, we should be good to go.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 13th, 2022. If you could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's lead the reasons to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda hasn't changed, so I don't think there's any change in our agenda.
Yeah, roll call first.
I'm sorry, roll call. Is Moreno?
Yep.
Roll call please.
Okay, Chairman Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Claffey. Commissioner Hagerty.
Here.
Commissioner Havens.
Here.
Commissioner Lenaris.
Here.
Commissioner Trister.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Braverman. Commissioner Drows.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
And we'll seat Commissioner Gill for Commissioner Claffey. And the next thing is approval of the agenda, and there's no changes in the agenda, correct, Renon?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Next thing is public participation. If there's anybody online or in person would like to speak, if you're online within Zoom application, raise your hand if you'd like to participate during public participation. Call in the Zoom meeting by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. Use star six when recognized to speak by telephone.
There's no one on the line, Chairman.
Okay, very good. If there's no objection, we'll move on to the zoning enforcement officer report.
You guys have seen the report, working on some banners and flags and whatnot. Also, I tend to get a lot of calls sometimes from the same individuals about, you know, cars parked on lawns. Go out and look, and maybe the car's there, maybe it's not, you know, it turns into an endless cycle, it's gone one day. I say it's fine, then they email me next week and said, car's back on the lawn, you know. So this is kind of chasing windmills, times I send notices, the cars get moved. Also, one of the Express Kitchen specifically worked with them on a large banner, they took it down because it was oversized. So his next option he's requested, and I can't regulate it, is he wants to paint the side of that building with a mural. Not an advertising mural, just artwork. So that may be, he said he might float something by us of what it might look like.
Is that the, which place is this?
Express Kitchen. This is right next to 3333, the old rental place. Like that big brown side of the building, he can't put up a, you know, 200 square foot banner on the side of it. So I don't know going forward what's going to happen there, but it might be a topic of discussion if they start it or whatnot.
Is he going to paint a sign on it or?
Nope, just an art mural.
Well, we don't really know.
Right, I mean, that's what he's saying. I told him, you know, no, no express kitchen hidden in there somewhere, sinks or toilets or whatever. But we'll, we'll see if and when that comes to fruition.
Okay.
Otherwise, you guys have any other questions?
Questions from the commissioners? Thank you very much. I know it's, it's difficult sometimes, some of these businesses, they only do things on the weekends, then they call them in on Monday. And so I know it's difficult. Thank you very much for all your work.
They do get emails for, you know, pictures of like Express Kitchen Galaxy carpet, the ones that put the waivers up on the weekends and, you know, residents send me pictures on Monday and, but you know, again, that's something I really can't go to court on necessarily, you know. I don't know when and where the pictures were taken, so.
Very good. Any remarks from commissioners? Hearing none. We have, we don't have any public hearing. We, next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve both motions.
One thing, sorry, on the June 8th agenda, it's listed me as absent, I was here.
Motion with the amendment. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Presented by Commissioner Gill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to approve those minutes with the amendment on June 8th. Okay, the next thing in, or down in new business, we have a Greater Hartford Municipal Study Group.
Did you approve the June 22nd meetings?
We grouped them together. Yep.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name's Casey Harden. I'm the project manager for AE Town. We have Laura Peretti. The other folks you're seeing with their videos are not the result of my top secret cloning program. They are other members of the study team. I'll maybe let Kevin and Laura, who are also here, give a brief introduction, and then we have a little presentation and in our attempt was just to have a little conversation with you guys.
Yep, good evening. I'm Kevin Burnham. I'm the DOT project manager for the Greater Hartford Mobility Study.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Peretti, and I'm the community engagement lead for the Greater Hartford Mobility Study. Thank you for having us tonight.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Yep, go ahead. You should be fine.
You know, maybe 10 slides or so, not a, not a, not a long presentation. Again, just give a little introduction, and then we want to share with you a few of the project alternatives that we've identified as being particularly relevant to the town. We've been coordinating with Bernata through this municipality's working group. We shared a packet of these alternatives, so that's what I'll, what I'll go through. And, you know, she has this PDF, it's something she could circulate to the committee. We're interested in the town's feedback. As I get into this presentation, cover my intro, one of the things I'll mention again, but we'll start with is, is some of the projects that, that are being recommended by this study may ultimately be advanced by entities other than the DOT. You know, while this is a DOT study, we're developing recommendations that could ultimately end up being advanced as either municipal projects, PRAD projects, or even potential public-private partnerships. So that's, that's really why we're pushing so hard to get engagement with, with all the towns associated with the study. But certainly, we appreciated the invite here to come talk to you. In terms of our process, we're about two-thirds, three-quarters of the way through our study. We, and in early 2021, have published an existing conditions report. I might ask Laura if she can put into the meeting chat the website. That way, if anyone's interested, they could go on. We have a few different study reports, including that existing conditions report. If you're interested in some of the more technical information. And late last year, kind of after that first year of work, we published a range of about 100, 120 different transportation ideas that had emerged throughout the whole region. And I'll show a couple of slides later, a study area map, but I'll just kind of explain it here. It includes Newington. It starts in kind of Hartford and East Hartford, and goes about two towns out. The intent is to study the kind of general area that A contributes traffic in and around the study core of Hartford, East Hartford, but also looking at ways to improve mobility across the broader region. And I'll, I'll get into some of the specific ideas and projects in a few slides. But right now, we've been collecting feedback on the 120 or so alternatives over the last several months. And we've been doing an additional layers, layers of analysis in terms of technical work, advancing the level of detail in our layouts, costs, benefits, environmental impacts, and ultimately going to be doing some screening, eliminating alternatives that aren't, you know, from a positive benefit cost perspective. And grouping them into programs and doing some additional modeling and creating an implementation program. And at the end of this year, that's what we'll be publishing, essentially a menu of potential projects with some ties to potential funding sources. And there'll be kind of steps and, and, you know, all the way out to 2050, so there'll be, some recommendations may move forward now. Some of them may be if certain patterns, say, of development trends, commuting patterns, work from home comes back to, you know, being fully in the office, things like that. We're kind of intentionally building in some circuit breakers to allow the department and the region to be able to react to, you know, different scenarios between now and 2050. So this project started really as a result of several different planning initiatives that were going on separately in the Hartford area. It included the Department's ID4 Hartford Project. Both the department and other key stakeholders interested in the ID4 I-91 interchange. You may have heard of Congressman Larson and his plan to tunnel both freeways through Hartford. I Quilt with their Hartford 400 Initiative has expressed some interest. And then meanwhile, we had the ongoing Hartford Line improvements with the new stations, the track improvements, service, East Coast Greenway and other related active transportation planning. And of course, CT Fast Track opening up and, and discussion of potential expansion of that service to other geographies. So with all that happening and with some of these projects coming to a point where they really needed to be able to understand the, the kind of net cumulative impacts that all these transportation projects have, it made a lot of sense for the department to kind of step back and do this, this comprehensive, holistic. It's called a Planning Environmental Linkage Study, which is a pre-NIPA study that is doing some of this alternatives analysis that can, that will then be able to be pulled forward into NIPA and help advance these projects. And, you know, a way I like to kind of describe it is with visuals. So you think the old school, you know, planning work tended to be pretty individualistic. Okay, we've got a train station, we got to figure out how to make that fit over here, and traffic's bad, so let's plan some highway improvements. This, you know, transit system, there's always a host of things we'd like to work on there. But instead of kind of taking that individualistic approach, the intent of the study is to look at all that together and understand the combined benefits that a series of targeted transportation improvements could have to, to the region as a whole. I won't kind of read these out loud to you. I'll just kind of leave them on the screen for a minute, but we have early on identified a study vision and goals. You know, again, the focus is mobility, but we also understand the effect transportation has on a whole host of other aspects of life. Quality of life, the economy, and opportunity and equity. And, you know, we put that right in our study goals, a need to prioritize social equity and accommodate future needs. You know, we understand this is a really dynamic time in transportation with the continued proliferation of electric vehicles, the potential down the road for autonomous vehicles, and trying to understand how all these potential disruptions can be leveraged to improve and enhance mobility. We went through a process, and I'll just maybe pause on the study area map, and I don't know how, how far away my screen is, if it's even easy to see. But this is, this is the depiction of it. Again, it's about two towns outside of Hartford, East Hartford, and it's that a weird little notch in the top that extends up to Bradley Internet. And just, you know, want to explain here our process that we used and, and how we generated our, our needs. And essentially, we came into this, there was all this other planning work that had been done. We borrowed heavily from that work. We did our technical work, understanding, you know, looking at the bus system, looking at the highways and levels of service and density and kind of where congestion hotspots were. So we developed our kind of needs based in our, our existing conditions assessment. And we also factored in our 2050 traffic forecasting and looking out to see how these different roadways and transportation systems will, will work under future developments. And then finally, we, we opened this up to the public and sought their input. So over the course of three to four months, we, we got over 400 comments, I believe, about different needs, and we investigated them and incorporated many into the study. And the result of all that is a, what we termed a universe of alternatives. And we, here's just sort of a smattering of them, and the purpose of this slide is really to outline that there's different types. So many of them are what we're calling capital, so that's build a road, build a bridge, do something concrete that fits a rail line. And, you know, it's a, it's a pinpoint in a map, it's a specific piece of infrastructure. But it also includes service and operational ideas. Many of these are transit related. We've had a lot of feedback about serving employment centers later in the evenings to make it easier for people who either don't work a nine to five schedule or want the security of knowing if they have to stay late, they, you know, will be able to take transit home. Some of it includes policy things, in particular, in and around Hartford with the amount of surface parking lots that are, you know, kind of dedicated to commuting. Looking at, looking at that as public policy, looking at the provision of freight parking within the region. That's a big issue we hear frequently from both the Connecticut Motor Transport and other freight operators, just the lack of places for them to overnight and stop. So a couple of examples of a few different types of projects. And, you know, I walked through this a little bit on that schedule slide, but just to kind of explain to you, we, we, we started off with a very high-level data flaw analysis. So we passed through that first, first tier of this CIV, and right now, we're in this detailed evaluation. And so this is where we're soliciting input from a whole host of members of the public, different key stakeholders and organizations such as yourselves, and, and taking what comes out of this phase to make part of an environment, or excuse me, to make part of the implementation program. And the next steps will be to advance projects into NIPA or environmental review. And of course, the whole purpose of this exercise has been to expedite that process. So with that, I believe Chris Nielsen is now logged on from our team and is going to, we're going to switch screen sharing, and he's going to pull up our interactive alternative site and, and demonstrate some of the alternatives that we included in that packet of information we sent to you. Chris, if you're on with us, go ahead and, and go, and if you're not, I can, I can double down.
I'm here. I'll switch over to sharing. Thank you, everyone. Sorry for my late arrival. I was coming back from Julio for doing a Safe Roots to School thing there. See. There is the, there we go. There's the shared screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this platform right here is our collaboration portal, and basically it's an interactive way to share all of the different alternatives, both on the capital and the policy side or the non-spatially tied side, and allow users to kind of explore those alternatives, provide comments, like thumbs up, thumbs down, those sorts of things, and kind of just, kind of create community consensus on what we like, what people are liking. So we can talk about a couple of the different ones that are in Newington. So we have a roadway one that's looking at reconstructing 175 to improve the safety along that roadway. Span multimodal opportunities there, kind of just generally improve its safety and efficiency as a connection between kind of the weather sealed in New Britain sides of the area. And then, as you can see down here, this is kind of just what it looks like when you have a lot of the interaction. So these are all comments from members of the public feeding off one another and then liking each other's comments and whatnot.
Now, I might add a few snippets on this one, Chris, just having, you know, it's interesting, a lot of people note how frequently it's used as a cut through. And I will admit, in my previous life, when I lived in Bristol, I, I have used this to skip around Hartford. And I think, so this is where looking at everything as a system is really beneficial, because we're also looking at the ID4 through Hartford, the 8491 interchange. And so part of me also believes that with, with improvements there, easing of that bottleneck, there are, there is hope that at least some of the, the folks who use Route 175 as a cut through or a connection, maybe, maybe that could be reduced. So again, just a plug for the benefits of, of looking at this more holistically than, than kind of purely trying to, trying to fix Route 175.
Awesome. Thank you, Casey. Let's see. Um, there's a rail station alternative that we're talking about. There's a whole host of new rail stations that we're looking at as part of the study along the Hartford line, to kind of just provide better service to communities mainly south of Hartford, because you have a little bit of a big gap there right now. So there's obviously a station in Berlin and the station near Hartford, but not one in Newington. So this one would look at co-citing the station with the Fast Track that is there.
And of course, as, as many of you may know, a station in Newington has been recommended as part of the New Haven Hartford Springfield Program. Yeah. So again, you know, with, with other advances on, you know, fixing the Berlin Station, you know, looking at some of the other stations up and down along, along the line that are progressing, we just wanted to highlight this, this section.
Thank you, Casey. So we have another roadway one, another connection between Fen Road and Alamat Road that's kind of north of 175. So this is kind of in a similar-ish area where you're kind of connecting across kind of major routes. It's probably used as. Yeah.
Yeah, the idea is, you know, this could be some, you know, if we, if we're looking at ways to address Route 175, you know, there's a pretty big gap between east-west connections that cross over the busway and the railroad. And so we figured it was worth investigating. You know, we have the traffic model, we have the ability to, to understand what a, what a new connection here might do. Not saying this is necessarily the preferred solution, but it was, I think it was something that was suggested by the public, and we wanted to, you know, thought, thought it was worth a look, just especially given the, you know, network is always good. You know, I think the more, the more travel options we give people around the region, the, the better off we are from a resiliency and, and kind of network congestion reduction.
Casey, if I may, but the point of what you're showing on the screen is for the commission to know how to get this tool and how to comment on your alternatives, correct?
Yeah, and so I was going to wrap up with that. So there's, there's a couple of different ways. Oh, sorry, Chris. But we, we, we will send a follow-up email with a link. You can go to this. Or, Renata, if you'd like, feel free to circulate that PDF, and if you wanted to gather written comments from the commission, that could be helpful as well. So we did, you know, we have, and I can resend it to you, but we have all these alternatives Chris is talking about with some introductory write-ups. We could share that with, with the committee.
Sure, so we can, we can talk about what is the desired way for the commission to submit those reports to you, whether it's like a focused kind of approach where they comment on each alternative as a commission in one document that's combined to you, or whether they do this online, you know, one by one. You know, they can decide that as, as the commission, how, how would they like to do that?
I think there's definitely some value with using the PDF that we assembled and had sent over, because it kind of puts all the alternatives that physically are occurring within Newington, and then also kind of ones that are Newington adjacent or some of the more regional policy alternatives are included there. And we're kind of using feedback from that as we kind of head towards the next municipal working group meeting, which I think we're going to be sending out a doodle poll for in the next day or so to kind of target one in the next couple of weeks to kind of regroup as a whole team and kind of go over a lot of the feedback from each of the communities about the alternatives that we had sent out and shared.
And so, I mean, I think those are the bulk of the, now, there's, there's a few more we've included in that package, but I might, you know, may pause now. We've been talking for a while, want to, you know, you know, if you guys had any questions you wanted to ask at this point, you, you know, happy to pause now and have a little discussion, or we can, you know, keep going with a few other of the ideas.
We can check to see if there's any commissioners have any questions at this time. Tom, go ahead, run ahead.
Is there a pedestrian mod, module with this, or is it just?
Yes, both, we have both bicycle and pedestrian modules separately. And I think in town, if you're interested that, you know, we, we had an idea for a couple of different greenways. We were trying to kind of think about the provision of like multi-use trails, not just in a recreational sense, but in a, in a mobility and transportation sense. And so I've looked at a few different ideas around the region. This is essentially the idea of continuing the guide or the, the trail that's along the CT Fast Track and getting it all the way into Hartford, and giving folks a way to ride their bike in from the southwest into Hartford. So that's one. And then I know we also had one that would connect Newington with Weathersfield sort of on an east-west axis. And then we also have several pedestrian scale improvements. And again, within, within this tool, you can sort within them. And then we also have, I'll let Chris kind of, yeah, exactly, there's, there's a whole kind of host of things, and that includes looking at traffic calming around the region and kind of developing a regional traffic calming policy. That's sort of a, a major issue we've been having. And then we've heard frequently, and I think some of the freeway ramps entered around Newington have this effect as well. Just the, the freeway and ramp pedestrian crossings are often very outdated. The, the infrastructure could be improved, the Sydney's, the crossings could be made safer and probably shorter. And, and, you know, we could do more to kind of slow vehicles down through those areas. So that's another thing we're looking at.
Great, Chairman. As far as Myra Cohen area, who do, who would I talk to? In, I've got some concerns over there with pedestrian traffic. And also, I see that they've closed down that roadway between Cedar Street and Myra Cohen.
That's private. That, that road is private.
Okay, so my question is, is, and when the hotel goes in there, they can shut that road down anytime they want?
It's a private site. I doubt they're going to do that, but I.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just, you know, it's been, been closed down for probably a month now.
It might have been just because of construction.
Fine, they paved it, so they put the top course on, so I, you know, I don't know if they're just letting the cure.
Okay, all right. The other, the other thing that's happening over there is pedestrians are walking through that second property behind the car wash. There's two definite paths through, through there, and they're pretty well-worn. So there's a lot of traffic going through there. And the, the one is very, you know, it's not the heap, steep and rocky area. And, you know, as far as, there's still no sidewalk going from Myra Cohen be, be over to the stop and shop, correct?
There's going, the part of the car wash's approval is they're going to put sidewalk in along Fen up there, but not behind.
On Fen, not, not down on the east side. Okay. Yeah, so I mean, as far as those concerned there, who would I talk to?
I just bring him to Renata, and then she'll, she'll go from there. But any, any questions concerning the presentation from the other commissioners?
Go ahead.
We're going to get a link for this. We can't really see any of this. I mean, this is, this is like a, looking at it from space. Right, and so, and is the object that we're supposed to comment individually, or should we just look at this and then come back and comment as a commission?
The objective of this was.
So the objective of this was, this study has started apparently in 2021. I I did not know anything about this until a couple of months ago, and that was by accident. I was kind of invited because Gary wasn't able to attend. So when I said in this study, I realized that this really needed to be something that you needed to hear. Because they were seeking public input and you were the public that this study needed to hear from. So I have some documents from them and I have links and I actually am going to ask them to update me and put everything on top of my inbox. So Casey, if you can send me everything on top of my inbox in an email and this PDF um as well, that would be really helpful. Then I will, we will have a conversation and you can tell me if you would prefer to comment one by one. On their website and use these tools that they show you, or if you would like to do that in a formal meeting and comment, comment as a group and I can put. Together a letter and comment as a planning. I I I I agree. I think that would be perhaps most effective.
If you could have the information to us in advance of the next meeting so that we can review it in time.
Absolutely. You will need one or two meetings to discuss this stuff as well. Yes, that that's the plan. Yeah.
And and we'd be happy to come back as well and and kind of have a discussion about your comments as well. You know, you don't necessarily just have to formally. But yeah, I agree that the the of of one formal letter would be best.
Very good. Is there anything else?
Do you guys have anything that you would like to add at this?
You know, the only thing that I was gonna add was was based on the discussion around the Cedar Street Station. One of the things we. That we are, we do have in here as an alternative is we're looking at the bicycle and pedestrian facilities around key transit facilities, and that includes the CT Fast Track Station. So looking at, uh, you know, I I heard some of the discussion about Fenn Road and where there's, where it's lacking some sidewalks. And I also know in that area in particular, and you guys may um have heard about this as well. I believe Crog was looking into doing. A pedestrian safety analysis in particular around Cedar Street Station and and looking at connections over to Central as well. So that that's another thing that that could be in the pipeline.
Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, a question. DOT is in the process right now, uh, up and down the Berlin Turnpike, doing new signalization and crosswalks. Is there any plan in the very near future to do something with those crosswalks? You know, in other words, get connection points to them?
So we have um as part of this study, we are looking at putting in what's called a. Uh, pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, I just got a note that Zoom quit unexpectedly. You guys still hear me?
No.
Yeah, you're freezing in and out, but we're.
I got a weird message that Zoom decided quit, but apparently it didn't. So um, no, so we are looking at a a kind of longitudinal along the Berlin Turnpike. And I think as you, but I I get what you're saying because I I think what will happen is their base project will put in ramps and crosswalks, but none of the properties are probably well. Connected and designed to facilitate that. And that's always a challenge. I don't know how far that goes from the public sector perspective and where. The connections on private property um need to be made to be part of that as well. I I I don't know if if, you know, maybe Renata in her, you know, experience as a, you know, a town planner, maybe has more experience than me or.
Probably. I just, again, I've, I've heard from a lot of the people who live on that east side of the highway, and they're excited about seeing this because now they do have a safe way to cross. The turnpike. But again, I think we need to make sure that there's connections to get to the crosswalks.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I can say from working in engineering many years, you know, DOT will come in and do the, the ADA ramps. But anything else in in the right away, it's like, okay, town, you can make all the connections now. So that's.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you all.
Welcome.
Thank you. The um, we have no old business and um petitions for public hearing scheduling. I don't think we have anything. So now we'll go to the town planners report.
Uh, so for the next meeting, we have two public hearings scheduled already. And those are the only applications pending. And then the next thing on the agenda will be to talk about our business zone. Um, regulation and I will start this and then I will hand it over to Mike DiMauro, who many of you know. From before and who is helping me on the consultant basis um in the office with this project and many other uh things right now. So. I want to talk about this in a sort of like a work plan scheduling type of way. So the objective right now is Mike will show you a spreadsheet that we worked on. The spreadsheet is essentially a list of uses in all of our business zones. So you will see what's allowed in B. Business Town Center, Business Business Turnpike, PD, I I Industrial Zone and Commercial District Zone. And he had put it in a spreadsheet so that it's legible, easy to read. And and I I personally really like it and I hope you do because I think this is a very user-friendly way to treat. Access to information as to like what's allowed there, right? So he's going to show what is in our regulation right now with some proposed changes. Those proposed changes are super preliminary. We haven't weathered anything yet. The idea is to give this to you together with some proposed regulation changes. Again, super high-level preliminary stuff. So you can digest mainly the format and the direction that we're thinking of going to. Before we have any serious discussion about any of this though, I intend to in fall. Do an an outreach and I want to actually send out mailings or some kind of online outreach. To and and we will organize this to first reaching out to Business Business Town Center and. Um, maybe Commercial District Zone and reach out to property owners or business operators in those zoning districts. And we will then ask you to hold a special meeting with them, get people in the room and ask them. Before we show them any of this stuff, I want you to see this, but not necessarily that. And then we'll say, okay, tell us like, what do you think about? Like, what are your challenges? Like, what what are your issues? Like, do you have a problem with parking? Do you have a problem with landscaping? Do you have a use that you would like to have, but you can't get in? So we'll talk to people and see what, if anything, they would like to do and and, you know, try and solicit some feedback. And then we'll use that and we'll use this format, if you like it, to go from there and then hopefully finalize. You know, those three districts and then we'll use that sort of approach to do PD, Industrial and Berlin, Berlin. So you mind showing um what this looks like now?
I have joined.
Yes, you can. You can zoom in and you'll and you can share a screen and you're good, or I can bring it up.
If you want to bring it up, it'd be faster, but I can do it.
All right, you're sharing the screen. Are you like, do you see it?
Okay, uh, so hi, some.
Some familiar faces, some not.
That Mike is on.
I don't talk loud enough. Uh, the green light's on, is that what I mean?
The recording, so.
Um, so as Renata mentioned, um, some of the different things that we've been working on, other than planner views and and some of the memos that you've seen. Relate to the the business zone. So um, the the table that's here, backing up, the the first thing that we. We did really is to figure out the structure. So so don't look at the terms, don't get worried about some of the details because this is really just to get your feedback on how we're structuring the regs. The first thing that I did in working towards the table is I went through and pulled everything out. So, I mean, you guys have about. Just under sixty different uses listed in your regulations. Um, but many of them are essentially the same. So you you call the same type of use, you know, you may have something called Business and Professional Office, and then you call Office or Financial Use in a different zone. And you have Office Uses, Business and Professional Services as a separate use. So you have probably six or eight instances where the same inherent use of property is called something differently. Um, so we wanted, we want to be consistent in the terms that we use. We can regulate them differently by zone, but we don't want to say that this is a, an office use, but this is a, an office or financial use when it's inherently the same thing. So took the fifty-seven, fifty-eight uses. And then came up with a table, which is the one you're seeing here, um, where I essentially broke them up by type. So we have like retail and service type uses. Food and drink establishments, motor vehicle type uses, office type uses, industrial assembly, et cetera, to kind of get a sense of. Um, how we're regulating these categories and and be able to compare them more easily. There, we started boiling them down. So we're not using three different terms for office. We're not using three different terms for one that shows up all over the places, re- research, research laboratories and research headquarters or something. So to try to be consistent in the terminology so that we're not defining them differently, but also. You have different criteria for the same uses in different zones. And so um. The next thing we did from here um is, and I don't know if you have that, or let's try it out.
Yeah.
So um, is I essentially took the existing B-zone reg and started moving it into a. A regulation that um really gets at what is changing. Um, I don't think it's new, a new idea to anybody that everybody's trying, you know, it's, it's the race to be less restrictive for all businesses in in towns and trying to make sure that. That um successful businesses can expand and 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 new businesses, that process is is attainable. So rather than saying just because you're this use, we're gonna treat you in this way without any real rationale as to why. We're looking at creating categories based upon those service types in the previous tape or those use types in the previous table so that. We really start looking at what's happening, whether, when the building is going up or when the use is changing. So we started creating what I guess I'll call triggers. Um, and again, this is just the structure, but if you look at those, can you zoom in on that?
And we talked about this before, you know, those those perimeters that, like, depending on what happens, like, if you have so many cars. That you drove to the site, then that should trigger a special permit. But if you don't, if you are a restaurant that has like so many patrons. Driving so many cars, then you are a big restaurant that may require a special permit. But if you are a small restaurant that has like, you know, twenty people come in with like four cars. You may be just a zoning permit. You don't need that. So that's kind of how this is, you know, this is tying into that philosophy that we talked about before.
A little bit more business friendly, a little easier for the businesses and easier for staff, a little easier to understand. The businesses and what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Yeah.
It may not seem like it, and in practice it isn't, but the idea of someone who wants to open up a small coffee shop. Is and having to go for a special permit and notices to a butters is just a monumental task to someone who's never done it before. Um, so, so when you look at this, don't worry about all this stuff underneath the categories because this is just to kind of show you the structure. But the idea would be for retail and service type uses, I mean, we may want to look at expansion of of uses or or specific amounts of parking. For food and drink establishments, we may be concerned if you have more than thirty seats or if you have more than. Two thousand square feet of public area or you're adding a a large patio, right? But if you have a small, if you have three tables out in front of your coffee shop, we don't need a special permit for that. So um. You know, assembly type uses, again, large uh groups of people gathering in in on one site, we want to make, maybe we're concerned about distance to residential structures. Um, and not looking at at the specific zones. Um, or if there's going to be uh events happening outside of the building. So the idea is that we really categorize the uses so that that we we take things that are similar and we start creating. Sort of these rational criteria for what we need to see and what we are comfortable with not. Um, so a lot, a lot of this stuff um is is very flexible and none of this is meant to be final. But we're, I think, are looking for some endorsement from you guys that you're, you're comfortable with the um sort of approach, I guess.
I'd like to see it in, in person. We haven't received a copy.
No, no, nobody has received any of this because, again, this is mainly like.
I like the idea. Not, I like the concept. I think it's great.
For you to be seeing this and now you're gonna get it and you will have like two months to look at it.
The other thing that I think is worth mentioning is that. While while there, the the case that's gonna decide it is still pending, they're, they're assuming it's gonna be decided eminently. Really, what you can't do anymore is put time limits on permits. Um, a lot of times you'll say, we're gonna give you this permit and you're gonna come back in a year and renew it, or you're gonna come back in five years and whatever.
About the accessory apartments, which are special, 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 which allow something all the time. Yeah, we don't usually do that, but yes, I know what you're talking about.
A lot of towns, you know, they they decide, well, we'll give you the permit, but you've got to come back in a year.
And renew it.
Right. And a business owner spends a million dollars investing into a business to not know if in a year something's gonna happen. So. You gotta move away from that. Towns are gonna have to do that. So if we create these criteria, then we're in a position where. Um, we are very defined in what is gonna come before us and it doesn't really matter sort of what was previously approved, et cetera. If you're changing a use and you're, you're, you're checking one of these boxes, um, then we want to look at it. And and we have flexibility in whether it's a zoning permit, a site plan or a special permit. So I think what we can do, if it, you're comfortable, is, I mean, I can flesh out a little bit more so you have something to say. We really hate this or we really like it, rather than just a couple of lines. And then we can send it if you want or whatever you're, whatever you're comfortable with.
But but we need, you know, ultimately, I really don't want this document to be very finished. Before we hear from business owners as well. I want this to be sort of high level.
Rough draft, and then we're gonna have a public, but what's the timetable? Maybe you could give us a timetable on.
We will have a special meeting in the late September on this. That's the plan. So late to, late September to perhaps beginning of October for a special meeting on this.
So is your goal to go through uh just the business zone or how much of the?
No, so he is going to create a rough draft of this for each one of the zoning districts. So we will have kind of what is here shown for the business zone will be for each one of the zoning districts.
Still using the same theory that if it's allowed in this zone, then it's gonna be allowed in the following zones, like our regulations set up?
No, we are not going to do, go back and look at the section before. We are going to list categories. I mean, we're going to clean up the language. There will be no references to language before. However, if a retail use is allowed in PD zone because it's allowed as referenced in B-zone through like reference to section three ten. It will continue to be allowed. We're not going to exclude uses.
But you're trying to make it.
Yeah, we don't want to keep referring, 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 referring.
So we will, we will not do that.
That we don't miss something.
Miss, he knows. We, we know, we know.
I went through it like two or three times. Because that's just the way my luck is. I I put one special permit where it's a perm- permitted use and someone will pull it out and say, wait a minute. But yeah, I think that the consistency is important in just the the regulation of terms, particularly when you have all these uses in different areas and and we're. Regulating the same use differently in in different places because we have one term or one word that's missing. Um, so, yeah, I can flesh this out a little bit um more substantially. Um, just so that you have something to really, I'm trying to look through, give you an example. Here's one. Corporate headquarters, research and development uses permitted uh in the B-dash TC. And then you have research laboratories, one use, research and development uses, a separate use, only permitted in the CD. Is inherently the same.
Same use.
Right, which is separate from all the office, business, professional office, all that other stuff. So they're the same use, but they're not allowed in the, in the same zone. So we want to just streamline it. I don't think we need, you know.
I think all the commissioners are in agreement that this would be very valuable to be able to streamline it and get it so it's more understanding for people when they read the regulations.
Also get rid of some of the archaic stuff, because there's a lot of references in there to, you know, coin-operated facilities like old arcades, which, you know, are kind of Yeah, we got, we got, we got helipads in here, which, yeah.
Any commissioners have any recommendations or or comments from Mike?
So essentially, the plan is to start with these six zoning districts and then we will turn into other zoning districts and we will eventually go through the zoning regulation as a book together, like the, this is the intent to kind of just chip add this until we are done with the whole book.
Sounds good.
No.
Is it ever done?
It is never going to be done, you know, it's a living document, it's not supposed to be done, we're supposed to work on it like as we go, but this work now is pretty substantial.
I'm, I'm glad this is being done, but I think it's very confusing, not only to office commissioners, to you as administrators, right, and staffers, as well as our applicants, right? So this is, I applaud you and your team for, for taking this on, it's definitely needed.
And while we are at the subject of zoning regulations, one thing that came to our attention recently was that you know, we get these requests for temporary events. And it is, for example, the fireworks require special permit. Special permit require filing on the land records. Every time somebody comes here for a firework approval that lasts like five days, they, they file a deed. They file like on the land record, something that carries with the property for forever. Um, because it's a special permit, because it's a special permit.
Yeah, I got to wonder if those events should just come to staff.
That's, that's, that's what we were thinking. There are other events.
If you feel that there's a problem or you want to bring it to our attention, but otherwise staff just handles it. We did that with this, the small signs too.
So we should change regulation because it's really inconsistent, again, how some of these things are dealt with. There are certain events that are approved by zoning permit. I don't know how, by past practice, that's how that just happens.
No, because it was probably an issue at some point.
It's a one-day event and, and that's how it should be handled. But I don't know under regulation why that is the case. So I think we're going to propose that all of these temporary, you know, anything that's less than five days and, you know.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll probably put that in soon.
Pretty easy to do. Very good.
Thank you, Mike. No worries.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Very much, Mike, we're going to move on to
So before you move on, I have one more thing that's not on the agenda on my report. So the cannabis regulation is scheduled for public hearing for next next meeting. However, the way it was proposed, we did some looking into it. So first of all, the reason why I proposed that regulation amendment was because when we originally proposed to allow uses such as retail and micro growing and cultivation as a special permit uses that are allowed, where we now allow them, I explained to you as a commission that there was this state statute that said that you could only as a town get one of those, one retailer and one micro cultivator for twenty-five thousand people. And then state removed that recently in few weeks ago, maybe like, maybe three, four weeks ago, when I submitted a regulation amendment. When they removed that density cap, there were a number of towns, including Berlin, which is adjacent to us, that had a moratorium. And I was worried that the towns that do have a moratorium then would prohibit cannabis. And then somehow that would make us this town that becomes a pressure point. You know, we become places that are concentrated with this kind of use. So I proposed a cap by number. Talking to some attorneys, we learned that perhaps there are some attorneys that say, that say regulating by number may not be okay. There are some attorneys that say it may be okay. Our town attorney today told me that he did not think that was advisable. He actually said that after thinking about it and talking about, talking about it with some other attorneys, he thought that the doctrine of uniformity in zoning would not allow such a limit. So I think in lieu of this, I should either withdraw and rewrite this proposal. I should withdraw and sit on it and see what happens. Or I can bring this to you as a public hearing and then you can discuss it and tell me how would you like to proceed with this? Do you want to regulate this by distance or how you want to go about this? Now, this is discussion sort of off the agenda, pending public hearing, so I don't want to go like too, too far with this. But I think if you want me to withdraw it, it's appropriate for you to tell me, you know, under a report. If, if that's something that I should do.
So we could withdraw and we could continue regulating it the way we have our regulations set up.
And it just stays how it is.
Which we regulate by distance and right now.
Our current distance is five hundred feet between each establishment. And then we can, we can propose it like at any time. You know, that's another option.
I'll open it up to the commissioners, see what they think.
I have a question, did Berlin actually pass this moratorium that they are hard-stopping adult use?
No, I think they're still under moratorium, they're just under moratorium.
Moratorium from a period of time.
They're just waiting, they're analyzing, they're waiting to see what they're going to do.
And why do you think setting a hard cap on the number of retailers would eliminate that pressure point potentially?
It doesn't, it just gives us time and, and, and our cap is only until twenty-twenty-four. Like I only put it for like certain amount of time until I see what happens around us.
But our, our legal counsel is saying that he wouldn't recommend it. Right? Our legal He's saying, yeah, he's recommending not setting a cap. So one other option is to leave it the way it is instead of temporary moratorium ourselves with the existing ones, is that an option?
It does.
Or other option is leave the regulations the way they are and
Just wait, wait a couple of months and then
That could happen, maybe one other store comes in, what, is that anything, you know, Commissioner Woods?
What, what I've had issues with and I, and you, you're going to remember this, is that it's five hundred feet. And we, we usually, we're doing some of these at a thousand feet, pretty much a thousand feet of residential area. Basically, we're saying it's not allowed in the town because unless we've changed it, I don't believe we did, I think we need to be consistent on where that measurement is from. And I think it needs to be like, you know, front door of the building.
These are five hundred feet from one unit of retail to another unit of retail.
So not property lines?
Not property line and it has nothing to do with residential either. This is to prohibit concentration of cannabis retail establishments one to another. Not, not from residential places.
I don't personally think we're going to be overrun in the next eighteen months, you know, with, with these, I, I just don't think it's going to happen. And to be honest with you, from what I understand, the town will benefit from it greatly, tax-wise, if these businesses are successful. So it might not be something that we actually wanted to discourage.
We asked, we asked the town to look into it, three percent.
It's three percent, right?
Legislation that you still have to give.
I believe it, both sales.
It's true to sales, yeah.
It could be, you know.
Not the medical, but the recreation. Question, are there any other towns in the area that have a moratorium right now or just?
There are a number of towns that do have a moratorium, but I don't know that any bordering us have a moratorium except for Berlin. Hartford allows it, West Hartford allows it, we allow it, I'm not sure about Betterfield, you know?
There, Crog, there's two, Bolton and Windsor.
Yeah, but not, not adjacent to us. So I think the only town adjacent to us that has currently moratorium is Berlin.
Maybe we should withdraw what you were going to present. And, and then we should sit on this and wait for another six, seven, eight months and we'll see what happens with it. I don't know if everybody else okay with that.
We've only had the one so far, correct?
Well, they had the medical and both places are going to sell.
They're both hybrid.
You have a schedule for when the first one's opening?
Feinfeldt then opened just for
That, that, they've been open for the medical side. Yeah. Any idea what, what they put in transition? Today about whether or not win the timeline, but I
Licenses are to be issued this month within next several weeks, I expect. And I believe that then they said that they would need, we're looking like maybe December-ish. That, that's the best information I have.
Get that stuff underneath the tree.
So we have, we have time to sit on it and, you know, reconsider everything.
Yeah, they have, once they get the state license, I believe they have fourteen months to get up an operational toll, so.
Or head pool building permits, so they're, they're, they'll be ready to go.
Good. Anything else?
No, not under the report.
Okay. Anything under communications? Mr. Crog Litters, anybody have any questions concerning the Crog Litters? Okay, we're going to go to public participation. From the public wishing to speak, please come forward.
No one on the line.
I just have a general question, Renata Commission, about, I thought actually the presentation by the mobility study was quite reasonable. I was a little more concerned, a little bit more dramatic. I am just curious though, when they were showing like the pictures of the different alternatives, it had numbers on the bottom and it said the number of views, the number of comments, the number of likes. And, you know, some of the views, I, I think I saw that were ninety-eight, some of them viewed by ninety-eight people, comments thirty-eight people, whatever. So there was, you know, a random number. And I'm just curious as to where these comments came from because some were quite honest and candid and I thought, you know, you like, I, one seventy-five, this is a death trap, you know. Another one for, I think it was under the Fenn Road to Alumni Road. You know, building more roads doesn't decrease traffic, whatever. So it sounded like not necessarily from a formal commission member or work group member, but it did sound like the public. I'm just curious where, who was new? Who was allowed to comment on this and who was representing Newington since you basically just kind of found out about it?
So this is on the website and I will, once I get this from them tomorrow, I will link to their website with you and then if you want, you can share it with the whole council. They have this public outreach opened for several months already. And people supposedly were commenting on this. So I think this is people that somehow knew about this. I just, I mean, I learned about this several months ago, actually. So I knew about it quite, quite a few months ago, but I, I don't know who else knew because this is neither Mike nor I are aware and this is a regional study that was done somewhat, somewhat not very publicly like announceable.
Okay.
So it's a website and the, these tools are on the website. So you, you can and probably everybody on the council can comment.
So there's probably comments from people in other communities on the Newington stuff, you know, who knows?
You know, when he mentioned that, you know, he, he used one seventy-five as a cut through and that's fine, but how about the people who are, you know, living on, you know, I, I mean, I think. And that's, I guess my second part is, he's, he said, I guess by the end of twenty-twenty-two, they're going to have a report. Now, are there, are the results of this going to be directive or encouraged?
This is a study. So this is a study that is going to provide study results and probably recommendations. So I don't, I don't know what kind of results they will provide.
Okay, then I would assume, or I guess we can comment on that, that anything that directly, or even indirectly impacts a town. For example, the I- eighty-four reconstruction, I mean, DOT has already said that's going to impact Newington for several years. You know, through detours and whatever.
That is why I wanted the commissioner.
Probably so that they could speed more traffic through the center of town.
That is why I brought them to speak to the commissioner, actually.
So I would assume at the end of this study, the town will have input on the finalization of, I'm just curious if you know that. Will, will be involved and included in say yay, nay, or we will?
I don't know, I, I, that, that is why I brought them here because I don't know if there will be another opportunity for the town to comment, so we better use this now.
Right, I mean, it could be, it could be a comment on those, those projects, like, hey, the, the town would like to have some say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
No one else in the
Uh, anybody else from the public? Nobody else? Okay, remarks from commissioners? Yes, Tom?
Parking. At this, what I'll call the town campus. Who is in charge of all of the parking in this general area?
I mean, it's a town facility, I mean, who's in charge of it?
Well, I mean, there's, there's issues happening with the library.
That's their own property, that's part of the
Okay, well, that, 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 that town, private property is maintained by the town of Newington. The snow is removed by the town of Newington, the grass is cut by the town of Newington. And the library goes to the Parks and Recreation and tells them that they can't have people parking at their cornhole tournaments in the library parking lot. And they requested a Parks and Recreation personnel to police it. And then went to the police chief. You know, and it's, you know, there, that's just a, a little piece of this, you know, part like tonight, okay? Renata, you know, put, put it out there so we have places to park. And, you know, we need, there needs to be more parking. It's underserved right, right now. And it's just going to get worse as things get better in, in the Parks and Recreation programs, you know, the town.
I think, I think Keith and the town are aware of it and the council and Keith, I think they were working on some plans with the superintendent. So hopefully that'll advance more and something will come up with it, but I think they're all aware of it. It is a problem, I agree with you.
For tonight's parking, you can thank the chairman of the planning person.
Let me have you guys, I had a, I didn't want to sit here by myself.
Apologize, he'll try and have valet next time.
Under Dave's request.
The town facilities vehicles. Now, they, they are parked in the Board of Education parking lot?
Town, the facilities department has the end of the garage over there is where they have their shop, so to speak. So they do parks and vehicles over there.
Okay, so was there a change in use in that building?
No, because it was always a bus garage. So they just, I mean, it was always, you know, commercial mechanical kind of stuff. So, yeah, they got a bay at the end, I think, or something a couple of years. When they, when we moved over here, they moved the facilities guys over to that end, some agreement with Board of Ed.
Okay, what about the?
Given before that, yeah.
What about the bus garage that was torn down? And that space changed into parking area?
So these are operational, Tom, these are operational town questions. They're really not kind of things that either planning department nor planning commission has an oversight of. You can vet your grievances if you want publicly, but really the person that you should be speaking with is a town manager. He oversees department heads, operations. If you want to put something in writing, perhaps we can present it to him, but I, I don't think that we can solve your problem here tonight.
I didn't think you could.
I, I agree.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Tom. I appreciate it. Any other concerns, questions from the commissioners, remarks? Anything else? Thank you very much for coming, everybody. I'll motion to adjourn. Seconded. All those in favor, aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.